Have you been gone to?
Thank you.
The link that they posted for that water planning coordinator?
I've been.
And because they have a job description, but they didn't ask for anything. It just said, "Send in your application here," but there's nothing that says what you're supposed to include. And I was like, I mean normally, you know, you have your.
I have one change in the minutes from last meeting.
Okay. I sent them an email asking if they could.
Are we good with everybody?
I'm glad I noticed.
So.
I'd like to call to order the.
To inquire about the position and apply.
Normal monthly business meeting of the Devils Lake Water Improvement District for May 9th, 2019. Let the record reflect that all five directors are present. If I could get a one little change in the consent agenda for our minutes from last meeting, I noticed that on page two of when we had our discussion about $750 toward site planting, up to $750 per site for the three projects that are proposed, also inserted was floating gardens. That should be taken out. That $750 did not include floating gardens at all, it was only for shoreline planting. Other than that, with that change to the minutes, do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So I have a question then, and I wasn't here, but the motion that Steve made was for each owner, the floating gardens and the shoreline planting.
Yeah, it shouldn't have been.
Oh, so you're not talking about your proposal, you're talking about Steve's motion?
Well, what it should have been, the floating gardens shouldn't have been included in that. The $750 was just for the shoreline planting projects up to.
Correct.
And I don't know if that was because of our discussion earlier was inserted in or what, but it should not include that. Would everybody agree with that?
Agree.
I agree.
So with that change, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the correction that the chair described.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda is adopted. With that, we move to public comments. We have three people signed up for public comment. First one is Miles Schlesinger. If, when you make a board presentation, if you'd make sure your microphone is such that everyone, everybody besides the board can hear you, especially those at home.
Can you all hear?
Yes, perfect.
Okay. I'm speaking as a private citizen, and I learned that Noel Walker was selling his business and on, at our meeting for the, one of our committees. And that upset me because as a private owner, to carry gasoline to the dock, I'd have to make six trips of a half gallon a piece by the time I could fill my jet ski. And I talked to Noel after he said that he was, had talked to Dennis Regans because I didn't want him to sign a listing agreement without excluding certain people. The city should have the right to buy it and operate a gas station, but I think it would be more advantage to the Devils Lake Water Improvement District to buy it or get partners to do it. And I'd like some serious discussion of it. It could be a test lab for the health of the lake, and we're doing great things, and I'd hate to see the dock, the gas station disappear from the lake and it go to six residential lots or condominiums. It's zoned commercially, it could make a great park and a great headquarters for ourselves. And I think we, there's very few lots available on Devils Lake, and I think it would be a mistake to let this go by the wayside. So I am asking you to consider buying the place or putting it to, a plan together so that we can have gas available for tourism, and it's an important thing, and we are, by charter, we're supposed to encourage the, the use of the lake and this getting cleaned up now, it should be used.
Thanks, Miles.
Thanks, Miles.
Thank you, Miles.
Have to admit, I hadn't thought of that.
I haven't either.
Well, I had because one of the other things about Blue Heron is that that's how a lot of people access the lake.
Right.
And it's one of the only ways that people can get out on our, to our lake is by his rentals, and so it would be a shame to see it go away.
To lose that business, yes. Thank you. Tom Rice?
I'll speak during the special projects committee report.
All right. All right. Mark Christie?
I just wanted, as a member of the Devils Lake Neighborhood Association, wanted to give you an update on the July 3rd fireworks, so we're all on for that. You can go on our website, dlakeoregon.com, and get that information there. You can click on the donate button, we'd love a donation. We're still raising funds for the event, and it's going to be an exciting time. I hope we have an 87-degree day. That would be, that'd be awesome, and not much wind. That would also, that would also be good. The other thing too, the, we've got a fundraiser going on at Steve and Nancy's place. They've graciously allowed us to come again. The barge, I believe, will be there, and you can access from both the road if you're unable to, to come by boat or jet ski or paddleboard or whatever. But all those will be available, it's a great time to come. Show your support, donate to the fireworks, grab a hot dog and some goodies there, and we're looking forward to that. That's also on the website, that information, it's from 11 to 3, I believe.
Yeah, kid-friendly too.
Kid-friendly, absolutely.
On what date?
And that would be Sunday, May 26th.
26th, yeah.
And I think that is, that's it. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Great, thanks, Mark. All right. I thought we were going to have a presentation from the sewer committee today.
Brian, unless you heard something different from him, Josh Bryan emailed that he has been super busy and was hoping to have it done last night, but I never saw it today.
All right. So, next update will be from Special Projects and Events Communication. I think Bill's.
So, at our last meeting, we all agreed to vote in Mr. Tom Rice as the new chairman for the special project, so I would introduce Tom Rice. He's the new chairman for special projects. Thanks, Tom. Come on up and have a seat.
Were you at the meeting, Tom? Just wondering. All right.
Good evening. My name is Tom Rice, I'm the newly, I was not voted, I was appointed. And I am proud to be appointed Chairperson of the Special Projects and Events Committee. Just to report on some things the committee's been doing, we did have our annual cleanup of East Devils Lake Road Tuesday, just a couple days ago. Really glad it wasn't today, temperature-wise. And it was a success, we had a total of 11 volunteers, primarily committee members and spouses. Alex joined us, and we had, what, seven road picker-uppers, two pickup drivers, and two food preparers for the lunch afterwards, and it was very successful. We did not count, but I'm going to conservatively guess we picked up 25 to 30 trash bags full of various items. We didn't have any items particularly of note, like we do sometimes. My side of the road ended up with three roadkill possum.
Oh.
We handled that, and a giant taillight we found.
Was that the barbecue?
We did have our hamburgers, yes.
And I think the most interesting thing was we, for about, I'd say over two miles, on the east side of East Devils Lake Road, we kept picking up pieces of porcelain from a broken toilet, all the way down the road, and I'd really liked the story behind that. It was amazing. But it was a great success and a good camaraderie, a good time was had by all.
I was going to say that I've driven down the road a couple of times since, since your road cleanup, it looks great.
Excellent.
Yeah, it looks really good.
I'm sorry I couldn't make this one.
Well, we knew you were predisposed.
I was, unfortunately.
You'd rather been there, I'm sure. Okay.
Yes.
All right. We did have our, a meeting on the 13th of April, 12 members attended, and there we finalized their plans for the road cleanup on Tuesday. We also finalized plans for the Water Safety and Awareness Program Clean, which will be held Saturday, the 22nd of June, at Regatta, Regatta Park, from 11 till 1:00. And our friends, Deputies Lopez and Doherty, will once again appear and do inspections of auto craft. And our focus from this point till then will be publicity. We want to get the word out, make sure that people are aware of it, and make sure people understand that when you bring your boat for a volunteer inspection, you will not be cited, you will not be penalized, you will not be ticketed if you don't comply. If you do comply, you'll get a sticker on your boat, and it'll be a good thing.
Star on your forehead, right?
That could be it, yes. So, that'll be good, I think. My wife reached out to the Oregon State Marine Board, told them what we were doing, would they have any support materials, and they were extremely generous.
Oh, wow.
All kinds of stickers and pamphlets and whistles.
Wow.
We drove down to the Marine Board Office, I think, last week, and picked it all up. I think there's 100 of everything.
Oh, wow.
Bumper stickers, I mean, it was great, so I'll leave these up here if someone wants to look at them. But we'll have a lot of material to share with people that come, and probably the surplus we can use at other events.
Okay.
Also, the committee, we have volunteers within the committee who are going to cover the entire shoreline of the lake on the 5th of July to look for fireworks debris and pick it up. We're going to kind of spaced out based on where we live, so we'll make sure that's all been handled, and we'll probably pick up any other debris we would see as well. And then we went ahead and scheduled the West Devils Lake Road cleanup, and that is a long ways out. It's the 10th of September, 9 till 11:00 in the morning, and there'll be more on that, obviously, as it grows clearer, but we, they wanted to have that date set so everybody could save the date, so to speak. We agreed to partner with the Save Our Shorelines Committee and Scout Troop 47 with their project on building the floating gardens, do whatever we can to assist in that. And last but not least, I want to thank Mr. Sexton for a great year-plus, I think, of leadership of the Special Projects Committee. He left large shoes for me to fill, I will do my best. Thank you.
Very good, Tom.
Good job, Bill.
Thank you.
Tom, thank you, actually, for accepting that nomination.
It'll be fun. It's a great committee, we have a good time in everything we do, and for those that are watching tonight, we always welcome assistance in things like road cleans and stuff, it's a good time, and it's good exercise, I will say. I wrote it down, my phone counted 14, 13,459 steps that day, which is 4.7 miles. Hey, you need to get some exercise.
Who gets that? Very good.
Well, and I, if I can say, Chair, I don't think we have a committee that's as enthusiastic as the Special Projects Committee, and I look forward to this next year and to continue to grow that committee. And on that note, we actually have another application for a volunteer for that committee.
That's right.
And it shows that the word's getting out there, so, thank you.
Excellent, that's what it's all about. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. All right. Do we have a brief report from the Save Our Shorelines Committee? A report?
Brief, I want this.
Very good.
All right. Save Our Shore, Mary Ellen Rich, Luke Drive. Okay, we have the Boy Scout, Cub Scout Troop, Jeb Swy is going to build, so far, we've here, 15 floating gardens. We told him that the 4x4s might sell better than the 8x4s, so he's considering that. So, that's going well. And we refurbished our first, very first floating garden from the idea in Amsterdam, and it was a lot of work yesterday, but it's looking good, and we divided it up, like one-third went back in the garden and two-thirds went over in our little kayak outlet place. So we'll be able to feed other floating gardens from that area. I don't want to tear apart the floating gardens. But I think that's going well. We will have 15, 18 on the lake as soon as the Cub Scouts get their 15 on there, so that's going to be good. And they're very excited about the project and think that little kids can glue, so we'll see how that works.
And glue straight.
We'll see how that works. I'd like to ask the chairman to talk about the.
Well, first of all, right across the road from myself, I think the Cub Scouts are putting those together over at Dr. Weary's place. He's excited, I've talked to him, and he's all gung-ho, he's got two young boys that are part of the Scouts, and they're going to all do them at their house, so it's right there. And the second thing, our restoration projects, all three are still enthused about doing it. Two are absentee owners, which I'm meeting with this weekend, and the other owner is on vacation out of state, but has, we've been in contact, and as soon as he gets back, we're going to put that all together. And as long as, since it's not water-dependent, as long as we can get those plants and put them in this spring slash summer, I think we'll be in good shape, so they're all ready to go and.
Just have to keep them watered.
Yeah, yeah.
Where are those projects at?
One is right across the lake from us at the Charlie Minna's place.
Oh, okay.
And he's, we're going to do some water planting there, too. Another one's over on John's Loop area further north, and then the third one is across on the east side of the lake toward Pat and Mary's place. It's pretty close to that.
Oh, okay.
Rogers, they've had their place for 50 years, and so, yeah.
Okay, that'll be good, yeah. So that's what the SOS, we didn't have a meeting today because it was, we're just moving forward, didn't need to do that. We had a meeting last April, or last month, in April, and we reviewed all this and have it in place, so we're moving on.
Very good, thank you, thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay. District project updates, Josh?
All righty. The aeration system has been great, I've been out there and checked it a couple times, and Alex and I have been out sampling. Looks like we're still doing that lift and everything that John spoke about as far as the effectiveness of the bubblers. So from the surface, everything looks good. Bill and I still need to get together and find a way where we can do a diffuser count, and we're working on that as well, just so we can make sure all the manifold's functioning. The compressor's been great, the temps have been under 80 degrees, I know Bill's been checking on it a lot as well, and I haven't ever seen it crack 80, though I'm keeping a little closer eye on it right now on account of weather turn around, but I don't think we're going to have any issues with the way the enclosure is constructed. So that's going great. Spoke with John Tucci, again, left him a message, I think he's on a larger project at the moment. He's usually really good about getting back to me, so I will check in with him again and get a date locked down for him to come here in the summer and do our test and tune on the aeration system. Any questions on the lake bottom system?
You know, it's just from me and cruising out there, it'd be nice to get a count to make sure they're all working. I, I know I mentioned, I know that. I mentioned to Bill that when I've been out, it seems like I tried counting them, and it's hard to count them.
It is.
And so, I don't know, it's, it'll be nice to have that count to make sure they're all, they are all working.
I wonder if it'd be easier with a drone?
Well, he has GPS coordinates on each one, and so that's, I was just wondering when that was going to take place, so.
Well, and that's, that's something I need to maybe get with Bill about in the interim and see if we can plug those coordinates into like a hummingbird or a rants unit or something like that, because we don't currently have that on our district vote at the moment. We don't have any GPS other than our sample locations, and it's not, it's not set up to be a navigator, unfortunately.
But on a still morning, I would think if you took a drone up, it'd be pretty easy to count those plumes.
We might, if, Steve, are you going to be in town for a week or two? We give that a shot.
Yeah, we get a still morning.
Mm-hmm.
Be more than happy to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we took the drone up off the point one other time, and the wind has to, you know, be.
Right.
Yeah. Three miles an hour or under, otherwise it will catch the drone.
Right.
And no more.
And it's over the water.
And then no more drones.
Yeah. I know something else that we, we learned that day when Steve and I went out and just kind of did a flyover was, it needs to be really bright, or the sun needs to be in the right location to get a good picture off the water, because when we were doing and looking through the screen, it was like, it just, we just saw a lot of sheen, you know, and we're like, ooh. Yeah, it's a little more to it, I think.
Yeah, I think, I think you have to go really early in the morning.
Yeah, you might be right.
For wind and sun glare.
Yeah. But I know Frank Cavaiza, that takes a lot of photos for News Lincoln County, I think it is, has taken several of them, and actually just took another round last week and put them up on the website, and it looked really great, too, so I know it can happen. But we'll look, we'll look into that, and I'll get with Steve and see if we can.
So if you remember, right after we installed the aeration system, there was a reporter from Eugene that took a drone, and he got a really good shot.
Yeah, was that the one with, when it showed the diffusers?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was Frank.
Yeah, shin guy, yeah, that was ideal.
He lives in Nancy.
Yeah, does he? Yeah, I think he's back and forth.
Shot from a drone.
Yeah.
He takes some really good photography.
So maybe we could notify him and see if he can give us another shot, or less.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can get a more definitive time.
Well, I can, yeah, I can ask him and see if, hey, if you can do a flyover that sand point type area there.
Or just maybe some suggestions as to when would be the best time to take that shot.
I can ask him that.
Steve can apply that to his.
Yeah.
All right.
Got it. The video project has been moving along, I've been having some issues with the internet, and I really do think we're at a point where we need to have a discussion once we move through the budget, because we have a lot going on right now, about maybe doing our own setup as far as having a service or something like that. I don't know if it's just because it's Spectrum or CenturyLink, I've heard terrible things about Spectrum being bad for commercial businesses, certain things, exactly like we're doing with an FTP camera. They see it as, as like an internet intrusion because people are refreshing it so many times because it automatically does that, so Spectrum will shut it down, unless you pay for a commercial type service, which many places like, I don't think Vivian's even has, because they just don't use it like a hotel would or something. CenturyLink is cheaper, I think they're around $50 a month or so, but that, from the people I have spoke to, is the way to go. I'm testing a couple other things to see if we can kind of get around that and do it a little bit cheaper, but I think that, that might be a discussion to have. The second location we're looking at up near Blue Heron Landing, I was actually kind of thinking of, it was going to be Blue Heron Landing, but now with that possibly changing hands or ownership, we really don't want to install or get anything running there. Jim Dewey is going to meet with Jimmy Whistler, lives right north of Blue Heron Landing, and see if he would mind us installing one and using his internet and setup there, and he may possibly have CenturyLink, too, so we can do that, so. The Airstream Pro has been cranking along great up until when a log got in it a couple of weeks ago. Bill and some of his staff pulled it out, did the maintenance on it, checked it out and found out the motor definitely took a hit, so we've ordered a new one. I think the cost was right about $1,000 on that, first thing we've had to do for almost two years of operations, so not bad. We're going to take the old motor off and see if maybe we can find a machine shop around, and see if we can find somebody to rewind it for cheaper than $1,000 and have a backup, but we're still kind of working on that.
Yeah, I got an update from Tucci last week, we had a conversation on the phone, and we were under the impression that was a $1,000 motor, but that was for one of the smaller Airstream units like the Riches own, so I was informed that it would be several thousand dollars for the new motor.
Yikes.
So it's not, it may be a case where we would just order a new unit, it might be cheaper in the long run than to try to use what we have and rehab the existing motor.
Okay.
Because we don't know to what extent that, it's a whole different motor, it's not electric, it's a gear drive with a 220 motor on it, so the gear drive might have been compromised as well, and we won't know that until, I don't think John Tucci's going to actually take it apart, but it might be just better to go along the lines to replace it.
All right, yeah.
Until we get a further update from John as to the seriousness of it, we could probably just expect to replace the existing unit.
It seems like to me that when we purchased that originally, it was, and we got it at a discount, it was.
Six?
Eight, nine thousand by the time?
Twelve.
Was it 12?
Yeah, it was.
Oh, five for, to replace.
Yeah, okay.
So, we did get a, I think, a substantial discount because I don't know if it was used or some of the equipment was used, but it was definitely.
It seemed like we rented it with the option to purchase it, and I know.
We got the shipping free, too.
Right, yeah, I think, okay, so at least that's on the horizon, I think that's a good unit, it's been successful, and I know, oh, I have, I'm going to address that a little later and some other information I got from somebody else today, but, yeah.
I would definitely think you could replace a motor for less than $12,000.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we'll look at it.
Well, it's just a matter of getting the, the motor ordered from Italy and getting it here, it's just a shipping.
Oh, it's a fee.
Shipping issue, they don't have them sitting on the shelf.
Yeah, I see.
I think that was the, the major cost was getting it here.
Wow.
Well, I could make comment, so if we were to replace a unit or replace the motor, is there a way that we can put a guard up so that a log doesn't get sucked into, I mean, a cage or something?
Yes, well, I did, I tried to do the debris log with something floating on the surface, but this again was a submerged log that was, yeah, it was just water log and got into the prop. So there are ways to divert debris from that, but it's just, it's another one of those daily check things.
Right.
And the day before, if it did have a guard on it, it would be less likely to be impaled, but it's a, it's a matter of, you don't want to put something so restrictive in front of this motor that it cuts the flow.
Right.
But it has to be something big enough where, as if it is three and a half, four inches of no debris zone, that's about as big as a stick. It's all it takes for a stick to jam it is, a one-inch stick, so, so long, so there are diverters, debris diverters, but we have to be careful and take advice from the professionals as how, how confined we make the debris.
Yeah, what I'm kind of envisioning is something like a tomato cage, you know, how you put a tomato cage, but you make it in a smaller.
Right, yeah, yeah.
You know, what am I saying, metal type mesh?
Diameter.
Yeah, so that it eliminates it, but you would probably want it to be a pretty good circumference, so the amount of water that goes through there.
Yeah, heavy-duty, like a shark fence or a stainless mesh.
Like expanded metal or something.
So that, yeah. So that, yeah, even though it's totally surrounded by the fence, the amount of water isn't affected because there's so much volume getting in.
Right, right.
That's, yeah, it's just another thing to look into as far as when we get the problem resolved.
Well, we knew this was kinda, you know, we were reaching out for things to look at. We felt that was better than not doing anything, and I think that's part of, you know, what happens is...
Well, I noticed that right off the, right off the top was, anything that floats along there, it does get hung up in the, in the withdraw or the drawing from the, you know, a million gallons an hour, is a lot of water getting sucked into it, so...
Right, and you have that.
It has a little venturi action that sucks stuff down, but even though, you know, when we have our half inch of rain, we'll dislodge enough debris that it'll just go on the surface and float, so it's always, it's always trying to catch.
When it was near my house, I was, it would get a lot of debris, and you'd hear a different sound, and I went out almost every day and just kinda raked out the stuff that was, and made it sound better. But, you know, mostly surface stuff that would...
Well, yeah, that created a pretty annoying venturi suction sound, and we put a diffuser on top of the prop, which eliminated that quite a bit, so that shouldn't be a problem as far as making the air suction noise.
Hey, Bill, does that have a breakaway prop on it now, and if not, is that...
Nope, I'm just solving.
Yeah, I thought it had an FRP. Could we put something like an FRP on it that's stout enough, and if it took a hit, it might shave off a blade instead of burning the motor?
I'm not sure if that, if, yeah, that, if that motor's got so much torque, I'm not sure if it would take a lighter duty prop, it's just something John would be able to answer. It's just, yeah, it's hard to change. Change what's already been established for the working unit. I mean, it's kind of an engineering thing.
I'm kinda thinking old outboard engines, how they'd have a shear pin.
Right.
You know, just a blast from the past on that, but I guess these are all the things that, as we work towards, and we all believe that moving that much water and putting oxygen in has definitely been a benefit. We just need the equipment to be able to withstand what the lake throws at it, or storms.
Yeah, it's too bad we can't have that in operation right now, so...
I'm sure it will be as soon as we can get a remedy.
As soon as we can get it back in, because we do have a few locations, and people have requested to have that, you know, in areas where it would definitely do some good, so...
Very good. Okay.
Is that the contact that we gave you for the electric motors, do they deal with motors like that?
I have not called them yet, no. And I will call them, but I'm
Yeah.
gonna go out on a limb and say if this thing's from Italy with some weird drive in it, and they, they may not, but let's find out from John or whomever what's wrong with this thing first.
As far as I could tell, he is, he's the, he's the go-to guy. I don't know Italian, I don't know what company, I mean, it says the company on the box, but where you go from there is, you know, is still open to us.
Yeah. You don't wanna write the address on that FedEx label? Me neither.
Anyway, upon dealing with Weeder's Digest and the people that work there, they directed me towards John, so he seems to be the go-to guy as far as contacting the Italian company, describing what the issue is, and then seeing what the solution is.
We'll get with him. Oh, I did wanna ask, did we get scheduled for the lake bottom system, the compressor oil change? That was one thing I forgot off the edge of the last time.
There again, John, in contact with him, and he was sending us the oil and the filters.
Okay.
And he didn't give me a date to expect it, but he said it would be within the month, and I think I talked to him right after the last meeting about, because he was scheduled to come next month, was it? And then we pushed it off.
Yeah, I think late this month he was thinking earlier.
He was coming this month to, or next month to change the oil and the filters and inspect one of the aerators, and I informed him that I thought I could handle the changing of the oil and the filters, and then Josh, you and I would go out and pull an air stone and...
Which we also still...
Take some pictures of it, get them to John, and then if we need to change anything, we can do it at that point.
Sounds good. Okay. The D River Devil's Lake flood protection, everyone's pretty familiar with that issue. We have that big wedge of sand that's built up down the D River channel. It's eventually gonna cause us some flooding issues, and we're trying to find some ways to remedy that at the moment. Currently, we have a meeting with ODFW scheduled for July 17th. They're gonna bring down their electroshock boat, some volunteers, and some backpacks. Myself and Alex are gonna go out. Anybody else from any, any of our committees who would like to participate and shock some lamprey in the D River and Rock Creek, more than welcome to come out and watch or help. Just let me know ahead of time so they can bring equipment. Tina, the look on your face, I know that you're, you're in.
July 17th, is that what you'd said, July 17th?
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah.
Lamprey shocking party.
Yes, so we're gonna have at least six to ten people checking for those little guys down there and see what we can do, and that'll give us a good answer there.
Do you shock them so that you can catch them?
Well, I think to catch them and/or identify them, I don't think, I don't think we're going out to actually collect them and relocate them. I think it's more of a presence of species situation now, because they're not, I haven't found any records as to where they've done that and anywhere in the near past whatsoever, and that's one of our big hangups with something like a sediment removal down the D River areas, because those Pacific lamprey are a species of cultural importance to the Sletch tribe. I believe there's some interest in fish and wildlife as well as far as their preservation, but we need to see if they're even there. And if they're not, then we don't even have to answer that, so...
July 17th, what time?
That has to be determined. I can update everyone.
Well, as we get closer, if you can just remind us again, that'd be great.
Sure, not a problem.
It's right after our July meeting, so...
Yeah. Yeah, I'll let you know as soon as I find out from Ben Clemmons, the ODFW rep, who's gonna be taking charge of that.
Is that ODFW?
Yeah. Yep.
Do you know if they use their shocking probe boat?
They are. They're bringing that, or they're gonna take that down to Rock Creek, and we're gonna walk the D River area. Not a hundred percent certain, but I believe Stan with the Sletch tribe is also gonna participate, so it'll be nice to have everybody there.
Yeah, it'd be interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, I wanna know if they're there.
Well, I've participated in shocking smolts before, salmon, and I wonder if it's much different than, I mean, it'll be interesting to see how this all works.
Yeah. It'll be fun. Fun on the lake, it never ends.
So do we know what the outcome is, if there is, and if, what if there isn't?
No, I mean, we don't, we won't know. I mean, if they, I'm sure they probably have some criteria. If they find one or five of them, there's gonna be less concern. If they find, you know, thousands of them, they may be a little more concerned as far as...
They may off the lake if there's thousands of them.
Hundreds, okay. Okay. I'll keep everyone updated on that. Water quality has been great out in the lake. I know there's been a few questions as to some green algae that's been growing on kinda the docks and rocks and everything on the bottom. That's a nonfilamentous, background green algae that comes and goes every year. We shouldn't have any issues with it, and so it's kind of a healthy waterway in the temperatures we're in right now, so...
The only other thing I've seen out there, Josh, are these clumps that seem to be, I don't recall seeing those in the past, but, but if you, if you, you're out fishing and stuff, you'll see these clumps that, and they're not very big.
Okay.
But I even had a fisherman today ask me about them, and I couldn't tell you anything more than there's clumps, and, but we don't have an algae bloom going or anything like that, so...
Clumps of little polyps or...
It's, no, it's a...
Like a puffy cloud, almost.
It's maybe six, eight inches in size, and it's just a grouping of algae that are, that's clumped together, and you just see them so often.
More out in the deep water.
Well, as you, as you...
Probably.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's, I'm not sure what it, what it is, but they're just some clumps, and I don't recall seeing them in the past. It's something that a fisherman pointed out to me today, and I, you know, acknowledged that I'd seen them, too, so...
I appreciate it. We'll, we'll be out on the water, you know, we'll check them out and see if we can find them. If anybody sees a concentration of them or a really Thompson Creek area, sandpoint, okay, all right, we'll, we'll be over there.
It hasn't been very, very many of them, but every so often you'll see...
Can you...
Okay.
I'm gonna send you all...
We've received a lot of emails from you lately on, your little canal is...
Poor thing. And if you feel, if you see anything like that, you have questions about, feel free to go ahead and take a picture and send it to me, and I'm moving forward. Thanks, Mark. And I can, you know, I can forward that on to Dr. Sitzman if it's not something that's readily identifiable to us, so... He's been a great resource helping us out with plant identification, so... Other than that, that has been one of Alex's main duties in the office so far, is taking ownership of the Ekso water sampling equipment. She's doing a great job at keeping that thing maintained, and it's awful nice to have somebody else take the samples, so... The samples that we have brought up just the past couple of weeks have been looking good. Our DOs are still very high, they're over a hundred, which is, you know, outstanding, especially for bottom, bottom depth. We are, however, starting to see that drop in DO along with the drop in temperature. We lost a couple of degrees on the bottom just between this last week. Started to get a little bit warmer, and we definitely saw the DO decline, which is, is completely normal, that it does that. A matter of fact, it should drop substantially quite a bit. The bottoms, the bottom water should have less DO in it, but what we're gonna be looking for is any amount of DO on the bottom of the lake that's being preserved or put in from our aeration system, because that's the issue that we've had. But so far, the trend is what we've seen the past couple of years that we've been sampling as far as temperature and DO are concerned. We did, outside of the general lake water quality, we've been in contact with Dave Waltz DQ and Joe Coke with US Forest Service about some turbidity issues we've had in Thompson Creek. We've recently received a response from Joe Coke with the US Forest Service, and he's a stewardship forester, and he does not believe that there's anything going on forestry, logging-wise, that has caused that. I forwarded his response on to Devil's Lake Neighbor Association and our board, maybe have a little more continued discussion about, about that response.
Is it, and this might be more of a question for you guys, is there a tributary that is obvious that comes in on the south end of Thompson Creek there?
He said, he said there's a residential one that's a little farther upstream, that they had a water pipe issue with, I believe, and he's been in contact with those five residents, his homeowners. So it could potentially have something or have had something to do with that.
How far does the turbidity go up Thompson Creek?
As far as we could walk? As far as we could legally go?
And then the, then the creek goes straight up towards the logging operation. There's just no question that volume of sediment or whatever you wanna call it, having three different events over, you know, numerous, numerous days. It would have been a major event.
Right.
I've really appreciated David from the DQ. He's been extremely thorough and helpful. And I'm not saying this from the forestry service, but that is not a good enough answer because it isn't an answer.
Well, it certainly doesn't answer the question, and, I mean, the three of us went as far as we could on public roads to try to figure out where this is coming in, and it headed up a drainage that it appears that it's where the logging is taking place, or some, some, it's, it's at least in that direction. I, we couldn't tell you what causes it or anything else. You'd have to go on foot and follow that to where it starts, but we certainly followed it far enough to see a direction.
Someone had wanted to provide some downstream flow up in, up in the hills and where all those tributaries down there. Somebody has that information, but we don't have that.
Right.
But I think we as a group need to pursue that, if there are county commissioners involved or, you know, something along those lines, to try to get some additional leverage in it.
Well, those events have impacted our lake more than anything else that, that I can think of, that I've ever seen, and it's pretty obvious that it's where, it's up there somewhere, and it would, it wouldn't be something where somebody's yard would be, you know, they, it's, it's a major operation that's going on, so...
The first time that it happened, I think I was the only one that saw it, maybe. I went around to see if anybody was around, look at, but it looked like just a wall of mud suddenly was being washed out of Thompson Creek.
Wow.
I mean, it was obvious, I mean, here it was clear, and then bang, it was just full of mud, so...
I'd like to give you my rendition of what's going on in your little Thompson Creek with turbidity.
Okay.
And what happens in my, in my mind is the amount of volume that comes down Thompson Creek all concentrates and goes underneath West Devil's Lake Road from, or East Devil's Lake Road, from East Devil's Lake Road to the lake is approximately a hundred feet with two ninety-degree dog legs. So now you have four thousand gallons a minute coming down Thompson Creek, and every time it gets a head of water big enough to go through the culvert of thirty-six inches, you have a thirty-six inch column of water racing down, and it hits that turbid mud or sediment, and it goes like talcum powder. And you get this cloud of turbid water that goes, and it just floats down past your house.
Flaps down. And settles, huh? The, you're talking...
Now, where the turbid sediment is, is at the beginning of Thompson Creek, where loop drive starts off of East D, and it goes probably out towards Larry Rich's place.
I'll...
Exactly, yeah.
And on the opposite side of the road, there's another creek that comes down.
Right.
Well, yeah, when there's so much sediment that's been stagnatizing in Thompson Creek, it will, it's a coagulation type of a situation where the flow is restricted only by gravity. So over time, as that path clears with sediment from the season, it starts another channel, so that's gonna loosen quite a bit more turbidity. And they do have this thing called turbidity curtain. If you could actually install one through the winter, it would do a wonder with the turbid material, so it may be a point with ODFW that it's designated salmon habitat, so it's not gonna be a feasible solution, but there are other methods, and it, they need to be implemented either by the district or the state or somebody that, that is, you know, we can't point the finger at everybody, but we can sure move towards solving the turbid situation, so...
The only thing I'd say, and I'm not discounting anything you're saying, there's probably a lot of validity in it, other than we haven't seen those type of events
Yeah, sure.
In all the years that, you know, we've been here, you know, Larry's been on the lake, Kathy had, not to the extent in the chalk around, in the three different events over a month and a half.
Well, I, I'll just say one last thing, we can move on from there, but I'm sure that what, what you're saying, Bill, is correct, it's just adding to the problem. There's, there's built, there's built up sediment, but, but the, the entire stream as far as we could go was clouded with sediment as far as we could go, and, and so really the next time that that takes place...
So you're not springing another layer of sediment to the sedimented connect?
Right, right. Yeah, it's, it's, it's adding to the problem, but, but there is a, there is a problem further up that's, that's a major problem that needs to be addressed, I'm sure, somewhere.
Would you be willing to show me where it is?
I, I don't know where it is at. I went as far as I could go publicly.
I think they've stopped logging up there, and it'll be interesting to see if it improves.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't happen again.
We can see it.
Yes. Mm-hmm. Okay, well, I know who owns that, so I'll go up there and look.
I have a question or a comment. It seems to me, dealing with the D River dredging issue, is that when you, when you have an emergency event, it's, it's easier to go and, and clean it up, dredge it, whatever you wanna call it, and... And so I think, I hate to use the word capitalize, but I'm gonna... It's possible that we could capitalize on this event to get that material out of Thompson Creek if we keep this ball rolling versus, oh, that's unfortunate that that happened. And two or three or five years from now, the canal is in worse shape and we're like, we have to do something. And we all say, oh, but remember when that happened and, but we didn't do anything about it? In my opinion, that's, I think, you know, it's really unfortunate that this has happened, but it may be a blessing if we can get some movement towards cleaning up. Because this isn't the first time sediments come into that canal down Thompson Creek, obviously. Look at the canal.
No, aerials, it's very apparent.
It's different, but it's a similar situation with D River. It didn't look like that and so it needs cleaned out. And if we can use this event to help do that, I think we should.
Well, I guess if I could just make a point too. So it's frustrating that we get an answer, number one, that we did. Because it sounded like they called the logging company and asked them when they started their equipment because there's an event happening downstream. And they said, well, when was the event? And we didn't start our trucks or move any dirt or do any logging until after that. And they just took their word and there is no other follow-up. But the point I guess I'd like to make is, is what within our rights can we do to stop the event? And I'm not going to go up in the hills and do the forestry's job or anything else, but is there any kind of sediment control that we can do at the access into Thompson Creek? You know, is silk fence or anything like that that we could stop that from happening within our right and not overstep any bounds? Because it was pretty horrific, the picture that I had, you know, looked at, the market sent out. There was mud, literally mud, filling up that bay. And it has never happened before. And I know if that was happening, you know, on my property, I would, even if I didn't know the source, I would know that I have to protect the entry point into the lake. So what are our rights there? I mean, at that point, can we put up, is there something that we can put up? Silk fence, bales?
Well, I think that that area there is one of the key areas we're trying to partner with Ducks Unlimited, if I'm not mistaken. I know that the conversations I've had with Tom and Josh, that that's a key component right there of trying to... We feel like that's a good area there that something that they could be involved with would be able to, to be able to help mitigate that situation.
This a little bit goes back into what I was saying at our last meeting. You know, there's emergency situations that if we want to be a proactive district out there, we need to know what our rights are and what events could happen because of things that happen upstream. You know, the path of least resistance in the hills and what comes down to the lake. And, you know, I've done a little bit of construction and stopping sediment is not hard. Finding the source and who's responsible for it is a tough move. And if you do find them, trying to get accountability and get the thing fixed, again, is even a longer process. And should we sacrifice Thompson Creek and the property values down there when we can control the sediment right at the shoreline? That's my point. I think it's our responsibility as a district. We're elected officials.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, that I think that we're trying to partner to do something that is capable of doing exactly what you said with Ducks Unlimited, if I'm not mistaken.
We were, the issue we've ran into there, not rather issue, but challenge, is the value of the property itself and the availability of it. I believe a couple of months ago when we looked into it, it wasn't for sale. And I've just recently heard this past week or so, maybe from Harry and Larry, that it is for sale again.
Yes.
So I will reinvigorate that conversation and look into it. Do you know who the lister is?
Jim Ewemura.
Yeah.
John Ewemura.
Okay.
Sorry.
I will look into that and see where we're at, get some numbers.
All right. Thanks, Josh.
No problem. And general operations. Bill and I need to get together once again and drop some buoys down in that sand island, the southern part of the lake that State Marine Board approved us for last year. To get that out and I had slated to hopefully get out there before Memorial Day, before we really start getting busy with the water craft on the lake. So once we can get that together, we will get that done as well and make our lake safer. Bacterial sampling season starts this month. We are already there. Memorial Day, we'll start collecting samples as usual for E. coli. We'll be doing that throughout the summer, through Labor Day. Also, we're doing visual observations for algae and any habs or issues as well. Especially now, the Oregon Health Authority has decreased the threshold from eight to four on the cell count. So they cut it in half this last year, so we have to be very vigilant about that. You know, as one of our core goals as the Water Improvement District is, you know, health and safety and recreation. So if anybody sees anything awry, a little too much green, let me know and we can get out there and test it. I've already called a couple of analytical labs and got their turnaround times. So I'll have a couple of kits and things in the office where we can run out, collect them, FedEx them, get them to the lab and get results.
We can't do that ourselves?
We can do them with the antotoxin strips. They're actually a little more expensive, the SNAP tests. And Oregon Health Authority has been moving away from the use of those and moving into an analytical laboratory due to the accuracy of the sample results. They trust the analytical lab more. I do believe they're still accepting that and I do still have those from Abraxis on order. We can get those in one day as well, so.
Wow, cutting that in half, that's major.
Yeah, and we knew that some of this was going to happen, especially after Detroit Lakes bloom last year. In 32 days, I believe, they dealt with that. So it's coming on a lot of people's radar now and I see it coming up in a lot of legislation and other things too. Bigger conversations, you know, things related to climate change and carbon sequestration. Now we're also seeing HABs management and these freshwater problems come in because we're all pretty much made of water. So now that's starting to have more pressure put on it, so.
I read in the paper that, is it D River or D River Wayside is in a testing criteria now? Or it was a quick headline as I was scrolling through.
It's had E. coli a couple of times last summer.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but that was our testing, this is...
No, this was something on the...
It's surf rider tests out there as well, I believe. And they generally find a lot of that and I think the district has actually done some BSD, some bacterial source sampling and found that a lot of that is waterfowl related because there are so many birds down there. It's a great habitat for them, but it does kind of get in the water as nature finds a way.
I meant to send you this article and ask you...
It was in the NewsGuard and they were talking specifically about the beach side of it.
Oh, okay.
Originally, the first time I read it, thought that they were going into D River, but it's the beach side.
Okay. They announced it like in Oregonian or something a couple of times last summer.
Yeah, I remember that was, because didn't Cannon Beach or somebody have...
But here, I mean...
Yeah, but Cannon Beach actually had somebody like get really sick or...
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I know they had a few...
They shut down the beach, I mean, it was kind of a big deal. I shouldn't throw Cannon Beach under the bus, but I'm pretty sure it was them.
At one time. So, yeah, we'll be keeping an eye on that as we normally do. That's one of Alice's major roles here in the district too, is she's going to be helping primarily doing the E. coli sampling, going out of the boat, collecting them, doing the lab work and getting it published as well, so. Our district budget is well underway. I will have the draft prepared tomorrow. Did not get all of the prior year's numbers, information I needed to complete the full review before the Budget Committee meeting tonight, obviously, which was scheduled and now is not. So that is the next thing that we need to do. I need to get with the board and the Budget Committee members that are here that I haven't spoken with and get a date set so we can hit the publication guidelines.
I noticed by the emails going around, it doesn't seem like either one of those dates are very good to get everybody there.
Yeah, and that's where we're kind of running into a little bit of an issue. We have to have the meeting before the 28th in order to...
Can we have it before the 22nd?
See, that's the issue, we can't, because the newspaper article will go out, well, will be called in Friday as the deadline and won't be printed until the following Wednesday.
The 22nd?
The 15th, and then we have to go five days from then, which puts us at the 22nd as the first available date to do it.
Five business days?
There's all sorts of these laws and because of publishing with our newspaper, a weekly...
What about the News Times?
I can check their guideline.
I think that at least a few years ago, when I was in charge of it, that I had to go through the News Times and so I think that was, we said that was well, good enough because more people probably read that...
And more subscribers.
Right, than the News Guard. And so, right, and so we, I think, when the year that I did it, we had to do that because of that situation.
If we could do that, are you available the 20th or 21st, Mark?
I've already talked to Josh, I can conference.
Oh, okay. Okay. I cannot do the 28th.
Okay.
But I can do the 20th, 21st or 22nd.
Well, I think that whatever dates we choose, if we can get the majority of us...
I'll call them first thing in the morning and then I'll contact everybody and we'll get that lined up, so. Next thing is kind of similar, our Board Management Review. I also postponed until we get through this budget period or sometime here in between. I know a lot of folks are traveling, we've got a lot going on with the fourth coming up. We're trying to do that around April, I know, so we're already a little late on it. Do we have a preference for a day? Anyone would like to get together and do that?
Doesn't matter to me, I'm pretty open anytime.
I'm back.
I'm pretty good.
What data are you thinking?
Whatever you guys can do and I'll make it work.
Oh, gosh. You can't give me that much latitude.
Well, we don't have to, I just need a 48-hour notice for that for public meetings, so.
I thought we talked about doing it right before the June meeting. Did we not?
I would prefer to not be up against a meeting time. Additionally, I know you weren't there at the last one, but we spoke about having a executive session prior to that before, so that we as a group, as a board, could meet and then meet with Josh. I think that's, and so I would like to see us do that.
So you want an exec session before?
It's just, you know, so we can, I think, I think it goes better that way. And then we, I mean, just from our conversation from the last time, I think that's what we talked about, so. So we need probably an hour and a half, maybe, all together, would you say?
Do you want those...
I think that'll shorten our meeting.
Do you want that on the same date?
Yes, yes, yeah, right before the meeting, you know, it's kind of as a combination.
Yeah, all we're saying is hour isn't enough time. Kind of added this step last time.
So do you guys want to, just for clarification, do you want a separate meeting as a board or meeting as a board and then you guys discuss and then I come in and we'll talk about the management?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I think it works. I think everybody will feel better about it that way.
What's the week of June 3rd look like?
I'm good.
I'm good, I think.
I'm good, the 3rd, 5th or 6th?
I think I'm leaving on the 6th or the 7th, will be gone for the weekend.
So maybe the 5th.
What day of the week is that, Tina?
Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Good.
And in discussions with Bill, I know Bill's works and so do you. I mean, we're, some of us are a little more flexible.
Just working at retirement, am I?
And, I mean, I know that Bill tries his best to beat all of those meetings and stuff and if we can do it such that we don't impact his, you guys work as much, I think it would be great if we did it on the later side, I guess, is I guess ask you guys. We can set it up around your schedules.
And, you know, I don't mind coming in if, I know nobody else wants to probably sacrifice an evening or anything, but that I'm available for that as well, so.
Yeah, I'm good, 3:00 to 4:00 o'clock. I just don't want to get into two meetings in the same day, I just...
No, it's one meeting.
Yeah.
Right.
Anytime after 3:00 is generally good for me.
Okay, after, let's do 3:30 June 5th?
Okay.
Wasn't somebody going to be gone June 6th?
That's...
Yeah, this is the 5th.
I'm okay after, but as long as the 5th.
3:00 or after?
3:30 on June 6th?
3:30.
3:30, 6:519.
Okay, thanks, Josh.
No problem. I think that...
Let's see.
What I've got.
All right. Non-agenda items, including agenda format. Does anyone have comments on the new agenda? Is everyone good with it? This seems fine for me.
If I could just make, I'd still think to make it easier, you know, let's work on the font. You know, if you go back to our regular agenda, the save your shoreline, you know, all your title points should be definitely different than the other. And what I liked about it, and I know this is a new process for everybody, but I was able to grab Joanne's minutes. And ideally, with this format, as you're reading through there, if there was something that was talked about that we wanted to find out something on, you can go right to the new agenda and it should be as an action item unless there's dialogue that covers what was said in the agenda. So, yeah. I think it keeps the things on the list, the things that I see in the agenda that are action items, they're always in front of us and we won't lose them.
Do you feel it's getting a little more comprehensive now as far as those items staying on the agenda until we get through them?
Mm-hmm, I think it is. And I think the board as, you know, ideally, we're always working to move forward. So I think it gives something in front of the board that if they see as an action item for, you know, several months or several meetings, it gives them the ability to say, you know, this action item, you know, when can we see it cleaned up? Or maybe we want an additional report on it.
Sure.
Because an action item, I don't think should be put there if you're never going to take action on it either. That's not progress.
It's non-action item then, something totally different.
Take it up here. Any further discussion about the agenda format, comments? It's going in the right direction, I think.
I agree, it's going in the right direction. My only concern, I just don't want to miss anything and forget it and all of a sudden six months will be, I never thought about it, you know, again.
And I think those things have happened. And, and that, I think those things have happened, and so this is, this is, this is getting better. This is getting much better. Okay, next item was, that was on non-agenda items, was the Regatta Park is still estimated, the deed restriction removal is still looking at July, I guess?
In progress. We, Miles and I haven't received any further updates on that from...
Not in time for July 3rd, though.
Oh, let's, I wish.
Okay.
I'll try and nail them down to that, Tina, but...
It was actually supposed to, the process goes before a judge this next week in Newport.
Oh, good.
So, it was just a due process. Any of the family members don't show up there, which everybody's pretty, pretty confident that they've deceased, and so as, long as there isn't an objection, then it will go to the next step, so.
Okay, good. Emergency equipment staging, do we have any more information on that?
Just really what direction we want to go with it. Have a Board discussion about, you know, what, how much we want to keep in there, what's the, the purpose of keeping it there, what are we, you know, scope and scale of what we're trying to do, I guess. Do we want, you know, some booms? Do we want a few extra life jackets? There's just a lot when you talk about emergency supplies, especially involving water, what we want to do. I, I would recommend that we come up with a list of things that we would like to see in there that we think would be useful. Bill and I can take a look at the inside of the shed and see kind of where we're at, how we could put some things in there because we are very tight on space, for sure, and we don't want to fill it up a lot, just for heat concerns and other reasons. But I agree with Steve that there is definitely a few things that we could probably keep around there. At the very least, to compensate in case there were some catastrophic, you know, meltdown on the shore or on that boat ramp where we could get a boom around it and, and keep it up, you know, from getting out into the lake. So I can, if you would like, I can put together a few of those cursory items. My experience previously did hazmat work, so I can find that material and kind of come up with a cursory list.
I would say, see what we've got. If we have room for it, what we need, and if we have to buy anything.
Well, I guess it, I guess, I don't think it's necessarily coming up with a list of what we have because I think it starts with a plan. You know, do we, if we're going to have emergency items, and I brought it up just for conversation, and it was really the question, should we have something like that because of the response times? And so, you know, I think the discussion needs to be, and it should be from you, Josh, with some consideration and maybe, you know, the intern. You know, I don't think we need a full-fledged safety plan, but I do believe that the district has a responsibility as a resource for, if an emergency happens on the lake, whether it be oil spill or, or whatever, and that...
Fire.
Or fire, you know, because the response time, I mean, we have emergency services here and, you know, they have the jet skis and everything else, but I think it starts with a plan and what we can affect. We don't just say we can throw these emergency things in a shed someplace, and, you know, it might even be as involved, what I was, you know, pretty passionate about, which was Thompson Creek. You know, if we see runoff or mud coming in, anywhere's in the lake, who's going to see it first? The residents. And the residents are going to communicate it to us, and I think that, you know, once we, or, you know, Josh, and maybe the, once we identify what that is and what we can affect, because it's kind of like our Special Projects Committee's statement that we said, we're not going to take on a project unless we can do it and we can effectively do it. So, you know, I think it starts first with a plan. We shouldn't talk about what's going to go in there, what should go in there. It's a plan on what we can affect, how are we going to communicate it to the residents on the lake or the tourists, or are we going to put it on the information boards at the boat launches? You know, how far do we want to go first? And then, once you have a good plan, then you say, what are the tools we need? So that's where I would like to see it go first, rather than just what equipment that we should put in, a space.
Is anyone committee-wise or Board-wise involved with the local search at all? They may have some resources, and I can look into that as well because I know they are very comprehensive with the things that they do. I think that's one of the reasons, actually, that Lincoln City brought on Ken Murphy, is to kind of lead some of that charge. So if it sounds all right to you, I...
They're experts at it. You know, I think maybe even presenting the question, but I think it's really you coming back to us and say what effectively, and would it make a difference?
What we can do?
I think the last meeting in the minutes, you had talked about contacting someone, and I thought it was somebody with the emergency response. So I think they're experts.
If we do this, I think it has to be, we need to take into account how much we're going to be liable for it, too, if we start publicizing that we've got this different equipment, emergency equipment.
It's all part of the plan.
You know, so it has, that has to be a part of the plan.
Yeah.
And we don't get, want to get sued because nobody can get to something, or we don't actually have what we said we had.
Yeah.
Well, I think they're experts, and I think, you know, what we become is kind of an accentuation of what they do.
Yeah.
And that's where I believe it should start.
Well, and, you know, I know exactly what you're, or what you're talking about is to do something that would essentially be like a community emergency response team, but on the lake, you know, with the district having some oversight as far as the equipment and, and the plan itself getting together, and I, I think that's a good idea. That's how we do most other things around here. When you guys have a problem or see something, you're the ones who are living on the water. So I rely on that, and we could, I think we could definitely apply that to a more emergency situation and come up with some kind of plan because if we could do something temporarily, when we see a slug of sediment coming down Thompson, I think that that, that may be something that we can get at without it being a, a big fish and wildlife issue, you know, to put some permanent structure on or, or, you know, affect fish pa, fish passage for a longer period of time. So I do think there's some options there.
Well, and...
If we were, oh, sorry.
Sediment, you know, as far as pollutants, I mean, you can talk about, you know, septic all you want, but, you know, the number one contributing pollutant in a lot of waterways and streams and lakes is sediment. And, you know, I think we can't lose sight of that, and, you know, typical thing happened here. We've never happened, had it happen before, but if I was Larry or Mark, you know, living on Thompson Creek, it scares the bejeebies out of me to see all of that mud coming down, and they have investment on that shoreline, they have boats that may not be able to navigate when that fills up, and that's important. So I think those conversations, and I think we have the expertise, not only in the city, but in the county, to have the conversation, you know, how do we do this?
No, I think that the, I, I think the Thompson Creek issue is an issue that has unfortunately occurred around the lake in different, I mean, First Street Canals, I don't know what it's really called. You call it Crystal Lagoon?
Well, that's awful, yeah.
Anyhow, I mean, that First Street Canal used to be a navig, people had boats on it.
Yeah.
And, I mean, that's long gone, and, I mean, honestly, it's just a matter of time before that happens to Thompson Creek Canal.
Well, you can look at the flyovers on Google Earth and see in not even 20 years that that sand has extended 50 feet.
Right.
You know, 30 to 50 feet from an aerial shot.
Right.
That's quick.
So I, I think that we should, and I know you have a lot on your plate right now, so I hate to say, here's what I'd like your priorities to be.
But you do have a helper. It's our plate now.
Yeah. But, but I really think that, that that should be pretty high up on the priority list of, you know, A, what do we do the next time it happens, whether it's Thompson Creek or my canal or Bill's canal, and, you know, if you start seeing that kind of sediment come into the lake, it's, it's especially not good for those property owners, but it's a detriment to the entire lake.
Absolutely.
And, um, so I, I think that we should, you know, figure out, A, how to fix what's already happened, but then, you know, what is our response when it does happen and, and get, figure out that chain of command, rather than just calling somebody and them saying, "Well, we checked out the logging operation and everything's okey-dokey," and it's, I mean, I, I'm going to say it my foot, it's okey. I mean, I look right out on that logging operation, and I don't care if they're operating trucks that day or not. That has nothing to do with if a damn bus and, you know, water takes the least resistance and takes all that loose soil with it, you know, there. Anyhow, I, that's...
Well, and it's the Board. We had talked about early on, you know, this Board. To be effective, we really prioritize what we can affect, and I don't want to lose sight of that, you know, because it's for the health of the lake. We always have to ask ourselves, as we're putting even work on, you know, Josh, is what can we affect and how high of a priority is it, so.
Well, and I don't want to lose sight of property values. I, that's an important part of our job, is to protect that, and if you start having people's waterfrontage being nonusable, that is a huge effect on, on property values, so.
Color of the water. You know, it doesn't look good if it's muddy. We know it doesn't look good if it's green.
I mean, I think all of us got on this Board when the lake was in its worst crisis and that there was reasons for that, and a lot of hard work and effort has been put into getting us where we are. So it, now that we've had another, I mean, kind of a catastrophic event, quite honestly, I don't think we should ignore it. So, I'm not exactly sure what we do about it, but I would like to keep pushing and...
We are well documented on this, though I know I spoke with Dave Walts, too, so, you know, as we move forward, we definitely have a case and...
And I mean, maybe it's a thing where we start an application, just like we did with D River, and say, you know, "Okay, well, you don't know where it came from, but we want to get it out of here."
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I guess we're still on non-agenda items.
Are we done?
Okay.
Apologize?
No, that's fine. We need to talk about those things. Next, that was in non-agenda items, was the, we talked about it last Board meeting, the possible purchase of some backup diffusers, and we, we were hoping to get availability. How fast could we get one? And costs involved in that. Did we find out any information on that?
I, John left a phone message for me about a week ago, and he said he can get them to us in under a week because there's stock that he normally has, so that's not bad. And I believe the cost was around $150 each shipped?
I guess our question would be then from, you know, because Bill brought this up, is, I mean, could we afford to have, be without a, a diffuser for a week and in relationship, or do we need to purchase one and have it on hand?
Why wouldn't we have a couple on hand at $150?
Right. It's, I think, well, and it's within our budget. It's like, it comes, you know, under maintenance. I think if we would have been a little bit closer look at the original bid, which we didn't know, we were learning about the aeration system then, lots of times when you purchase a fire engine, it comes with some spare parts if you're in a...
Well, and, and it was coming with one spare, but we put that in instead.
Correct.
We, we actually contracted for 24 and we put 25.
Right, right.
So we, we used the spare.
I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I did read in the minutes that there was, his motion was withdrawn after the discussion. What is the...
No, we were just trying to find out.
Oh, those two things?
Yeah, we didn't know the cost or the time.
Okay, okay, okay.
The, and the cost.
Copy.
And cost, and so is it worth it for us as a Board to have a spare or two, and if we didn't have, how long would it take to get that?
Well, I think it's imperative. If you look at how many, how much air is going out there in oxygen in the lake through a diffuser in a 24-hour period, it's pretty substantial, and I would say we definitely need two extra...
Well, and they don't last forever, and so it's not like we have capital at $150. You can hardly call it capital, but capital's sitting there that we're never going to use.
Right.
So we are going to use it. I think it should be on hand to, to fix it.
Boat anchor could run it.
So Bill's going to make a motion?
All right. I'm going to reinstate my motion that we purchased two air diffusers from Lakesavers so that we have two on hand in the case of one malfunctions and becomes nonusable so we can have the ability to change one out so it's not affecting the system.
Any further discussion?
I have discussion. Do you have to have a motion for such a small amount of maintenance equipment?
Um, I, yeah, I don't really think so. We have more than enough in our budget to cover it.
I mean, I don't mind doing it. I'm just thinking, you know, when this, when, when we get the two and one fails, we're not going to have to have another motion to buy a $150 diffuser, are we?
No, I'll, I'll just...
Because I don't want to wait for a meeting. I, that's something that you should just be taking care of, in my opinion.
I agree. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Get your extra diffusers. Okay. We had another non-agenda item that's not on Board, and that was the application of, is it Weston Fritz?
Weston.
Weston Fritz has filled out an application to be a part of the Special Projects and/or another committee of his choice, and we have the application in our packet. From looking over this, I wonder why he's not a, a Board member. He has the background. It sounds like we have somebody that's interested in volunteering and being a part of what goes on in, on Devil's Lake, and so...
Is he here?
Yes.
Oh, he is. Very good.
I had the pleasure of working with Weston for a few months, and he was great to work with. He is a sponge for knowledge and great, great person to...
Weston, come up here.
Add to our committees.
Josh didn't tell you about the questions that may be impromptu when you sit in the hot seat, did they?
We all have five questions.
I feel unprepared.
You felt like you're prepared. I love that enthusiasm. So af, after the meeting and the discussion that's gone on in this meeting, are you sure you still want to be part of the Special Projects?
Yeah, I think so.
Nice.
Or...
Or the other committee.
Or one of the other committees, or one of the other committees.
Talking to the microphone.
Do you have a preference of which committee you'd like to be a part of? I guess, Special Projects is also, so we've got Special Projects and then we've got the Water Quality Committee, too. Either one would welcome you. I think the Board would, I, I welcome your application. Thanks for wanting to be involved.
Well, and our resolution doesn't require a person to pick one, one committee at all.
How often do they, do, how often do both committees meet?
Normally, once a month, and then they get together for events like the, the, you know, the road cleanup that we had on Tuesday, things like that. They, they don't meet that often, so.
Yeah, ours is typically, Special Projects is about every four months, so...
For a meeting?
Yeah.
For a meeting. You know, we'll schedule events, like the, you know, roadside cleanup, but our official meeting, probably every three to four months, so.
Not very often.
I could maybe do both of them.
Okay.
Doesn't really sound like too much of a time commitment.
So I, I guess, has everybody agreed that we should...
I move to accept his application as presented.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks for, we look forward to working with you. Thanks, Weston.
Thanks, Weston.
Yeah, thank you.
What size of cape do you wear?
And then we have all your contact information, Weston, to make sure that we can get ahold of you, email and everything.
It's all in the application. This is my email or my phone, where Josh can get ahold of me as well.
All right, great.
Let me know if you need anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other non-agenda items from the Board? Actually, I have a couple. First, I was going, I wanted to kind of update everybody on our rainfall situation... First, uh, I was going, I wanted to kinda update everybody on our rainfall situation. At my house, to date, we've had 55.82 inches, that sounds like a lot of rain, but that's 20.3 inches below last year.
Wow.
And that's 40.3 inches below the year before.
What?
Yes, yes.
What was the year that we had so much?
We had 94 inches two years ago, um, last year we had, um, seven, at this point, we had 75.3 inches, or, or thereabout, so we are way behind in rainfall.
From that one crazy year, not average, though?
No, I'm, I don't know what the average is, we probably average between, I think, uh, Lincoln City averages between 70 and 100 inches, they say.
Right.
But, just so you know, we're way behind.
And we've had 55?
And we've had 55, and so, last year in May, we had only .13 inches, and we're not scheduled for rain until next week, I think on Tuesday, so we're behind on rainfall, we've installed the dam, and if you've driven around not only the lake, but the entire Oregon coast, you'll notice that all the, the spruce trees are losing their needles. I've been working with the Master Gardeners and OSU to try to identify what the problem is, and, um, met with the Master Gardener program today, and talked to the Oregon Department of Forestry today on the phone, finally got ahold of somebody, and, um, they've narrowed the problem down to, the Master Gardeners thought it was a fungus that started last, last fall, and, um, manifests itself with the loss of needles in the spring, that's why we're, every, all those spruce trees look like they're dying. If you look at the spruce trees, you'll see the tips, there's still something growing.
But they're phoning a lot, doesn't that usually mean they're dying?
No. The, when I talked to the state, that finally got through to the Oregon State Forestry Department, they've got a professor on it, and, um, and their specialist on it, and they, their initial opinion is that it's aphids.
Oh, wow.
And aphids.
Oh, really?
That we...
I have one in my yard, and it's just, all the needles are dying, but there's new growth coming out of it.
Right, and, um, their, their initial thought was, although they're gonna get back to me, is that, um, that we had a, a very mild winter, didn't kill off the, all the, the bugs, and now all the spruce trees are suffering from it. The good thing is, I guess, in my mind, the research I've done, uh, we had an event like this back in 2005, I don't recall it, but, um, we didn't see a big spruce tree die off, um, that resulted from that, but it was a similar type event all along the Oregon coast, and it's, it's all these, um, spruce trees that are, that this is affecting, it's not the Douglas fir or anything else next to it, but, um, I should have an update, and as far as I know, uh, within the next couple weeks, should have an update for the next meeting, I'll let Josh know so he can put it on our website, there's lots of questions, if you're a homeowner and you've got spruce trees, you know what I'm talking about, um, but it's, if you drive down the road, you see the same problem, and, uh, so...
I just noticed today, the one by the police station and the fire, or, um, post office, that great big one on the corner there is all brown.
Yeah, and so, uh, hopefully, um, it's a, it's a situation that will take care of itself with new growth over the coming years, um, as long as the, 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 either the aphid infestation or the fungus isn't too severe.
What eats the aphids, just ladybugs?
Yeah, uh, you know, my wife emailed me...
On my wife's tea rows, there's a ton of aphids.
Yeah, I had a really bad infestation last year in my garden, terrible.
So, I, if, if there's anything we can do about it, or that we, as homeowners, can do about it, I'll keep the board informed, but I know that it's a grave concern to anybody who owns property and has spruce trees, and, so I thought I'd update the board on that.
Thank you.
I wished I had more encouraging news, it's just a lot of cleanup, but hopefully, you know, if we had this event in 2005 and we don't see a bunch of dead trees, like tussock moth or something like that, that just destroys whole forests, that this will eventually recover. Is there, I guess I need to get to the agenda, um, is there any further, um, comments from the audience present? Anyone else like to address the board? Any further comments from the board? Thank you, thank you for coming, thank you for volunteering, East Devil's Lake Road looks great.
Yeah.
Appreciate everything you do, and thanks Weston for volunteering to be a part of this.
Thanks Marlene and Larry.
With that, I, the meeting is adjourned.
Was it all spruce trees, Kent?
I've got one in my...